Trusty Chomblin, here. Trusty, here. Trusty Chomblin.
Here.
Trusty Garrett, here. Mayor Martin.
Here. Motion to approve minutes previous meeting June 10th.
Sub move.
For the second.
Second.
Any discussion on these folks?
I think there was one correction that Juanita picked out and I think it was under the Gao Cross report. It was on this one. Sidewalk on Church Street, it should be Main Street, which is, uh, there are his report, number five.
Should be.
Church Street, no, Church Street. I did do one on Church Street and one on Main Street.
Oh, okay. I thought it was.
Okay, but is Church Street gonna be all on?
Which is what I had, but Juanita corrected it to Main Street and so.
There is Church Street and mine all on.
Okay. Just put in, oh, the, uh, Main Street. I have a comment on the first page. Mayor Martin commented, put an abstract, maybe get it back to the village next week. They haven't done so already. They've been on vacation and they are still researching the Mill Street issue. Any other special amendments? All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Presentation, uh, presentation, petitions, communications, notices, general question period for members of the community.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Just throwing out for brief, you don't see a lot of coverage in the village of police, I mean, other than border patrol. You don't see a steady patrol doing enforcement anywhere, whether it be trucks, cars, or speed or whatever. I know when you come in the village off the end of Elm Street, a short portion of the town, the speed sign is actually on the curb. It's been there ever since I've been, about twenty-five years or so. It's oblivious. You don't see it coming in to the streets. So the first sign you see is actually at the village limit. But by then the cars are doing fifteen, sixteen miles an hour, in addition to their trucks. My thought was that for a five gallon can of paint and some stencils, why not put stencils in the road that says thirty miles an hour? I mean, and put them as well as stops and other places. Watching the people come down off of Prospect Street, no one stops for that stop sign. And again, there's not law enforcement coverage. It's right there by the fire department. Doesn't take any plywood stencils or someone with a crafty paintbrush, but.
You need to use, you know, highway surface paint, but.
But do you, can you give me the stuff?
Yeah. I can tell you from experience, nobody stops and stops standing in front of that.
Why not?
Nobody stops and stops standing anywhere.
Actually, they were sitting in P C's to repotrate.
I do too, before I tell you.
But it's. But I think it's, there's something else.
But you know, and this is really, and a lot of people, if you Google or use MapQuest, it still shows coming to the village to get the customs.
Yeah.
And a lot of the truck routes, because you got a more, you got a lot of trucks that are making no deliveries alone away. The same thing as far as no through trucks.
It's the same way when the border backs up.
They cut through.
They get off, they make it out Church.
And they come through. You know, a lot of times we think there's an accident on Route eleven, because why is, why are we having all this traffic down Elm Street? But it's maybe just change in the signage, um, maybe some thirty mile an hour paint in the highway. I mean, people will see it. A lot could be something new. Stop sign, stop at, uh.
If you're requesting the state to do patrol in front of you, what do you think of that?
Well, the sheriff's been pretty responsive to this. It's just that they have so much going on. They're coming for a leak, increase the coverage, and then they're gone for months.
Which doesn't work.
Yeah. We can, I can certainly call it.
Or institute a new position of constable.
Um, the expense of that would be astronomical for all the requirements and stuff that are in place today. It would be phenomenal.
Which is paint, I mean, a five gallon can of paint, shoot it in. Thank you. Yellow.
Make note of that, sir. Anything else? Excellent presentation of congratulations on our resolution to Eagle Scout Tyler Short. I guess they're not going to attend. I can read this. Should I read this? It was on tape. Okay. Resolution, congratulations Tyler Short. Whereas Tyler Short has given his time and energy to achieving his goal of earning the title of Eagle Scout through Boy Scout troop number forty-one and whereas Tyler has completed the requirements out and having been examined by an Eagle Scout Board of Review and whereas Tyler was found worthy of Eagle Scout on February fourth, two thousand thirteen and whereas an Eagle Scout Court of Honor is scheduled for Saturday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen, at time after time Reception Hall honoring this achievement and therefore be it resolved that this resolution of congratulations to Tyler Short is offered by Mayor Gregory Martin and. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Sub move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Having been adopted by unanimous affirmative vote by the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees, this resolution is to be spread upon the minutes of the regular board meeting held on the eighth day of July in the year two thousand thirteen. And I plan to go to this reception, if you're all available, I'm sure you're all invited, to award this to Tyler Martin.
When is that, Greg?
Uh, July twenty-seventh.
Do you know at what time?
I think it's in the afternoon. I'll have to check this out. Hey, Mr. Pedro, you're up.
Well, not a whole lot new. I'm still fighting the grass issue. Issue one appearance, I think, and I got a couple more to come. There's a letter that you, I'm sure y'all got copied of Judy Kelly regarding the water meter situation. I know, spoke to Mayor about that and how to handle that. I just used stuff out of the building code, in the village code, to come up with some sort of, you know, way of, you're gonna have to use these, uh, decide how you're gonna differentiate one or two family homes. Had another issue with noise, which I resolved today. I was reading the code out of an old, old code book, so I was mistakenly wrong for about a month now.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you about that.
How was it resolved?
I had a copy and I thought it was pretty clear.
Yeah. The way it's resolved is the definition in the current book or the revised edition, whoever's creating the noise is in violation. There's no decibel meters, there's nothing like this has to take place. If the neighbor thinks it's noise, it's noise, and he would be in violation, so I'm gonna...
Any time of day?
Yes.
Yeah. That's the way I read it.
Yes, in that fact, I read it.
It was revised in two thousand three, I believe.
I do, so I went through the, uh, the other section and there are some things that are time stamped.
Right.
Such as running a truck.
Yeah, contractors and building, yeah, right, stuff like that. But general noise or musical instruments or radio, stuff like that, there is no time stamp. So anyway, I'm gonna be in contact with the person and explain it to him and go from there with it. I could send a letter to the woman that filed the complaint, so she'll, she'll, I think we tried to do something there a couple of hours ago. Um, the trailer on Moore Street is gone. I don't know if anybody knows that. That disappeared.
It's about three weeks ago.
Yeah, it's lucky.
And the last thing I really have something to do with what I do, but I'm one of the fire commissioners and I just, I know we're on tape here and I just wanna put it out there that the fire department is always looking for new volunteers. Volunteerism is down on everything and everywheres and the fire service is really struggling with it. And, you know, if you know anybody that would be interested in something like this, I'll have to get ahold of anybody in the fire department, the chief, myself, and we can get you information on how to get started. And we're trying to recruit new members. The population in the area is not growing, so it's very, very hard to retain what we have. And, you know, now you get the, with the calls that come out, they don't want you to send equipment. Everybody's got equipment, they want men. Fill the van with men and bring them, are the cost. I'd just like to put that out there. Other than that, any other questions for me?
How was the recruitment thing, since the fire department has been doing?
They got a couple, but they got in the program and then they moved out of the area for other jobs. Some went to school. Um, it's been very, very hard to keep people under the requirements. It's not easy. I mean, I never realized how hard it was to be a fireman until I got involved with it and realized how much time they have to put in just, just to go to the fire. Never mind run the equipment or do anything else, so it's, it's a definite commitment.
All right. Give my report. I'm pleased to announce that the annual Village Fest has been scheduled for Saturday, August seventeenth, from noon to four P M. at the River Street Park. There will be plenty of activities and displays for the enjoyment of all who attend. Champlain Telephone will host its annual open house with many activities. The Town of Champlain will sponsor its annual townwide garage sale while celebrating the town's two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary. Anniversary events include a performance by the renowned Gibson Brothers, a nationally regarded bluegrass band from nearby Ellenburg, a stamp cancellation ceremony honoring the Town of Champlain's anniversary. At eleven A M., a dedication will be, will take place at Saint Mary's Church honoring Nora Dya Moore, son of Champlain's founder, Pliny Moore, with a permanent historical marker across, across the Church Street from his former, former home. Nora Dya Moore, an abolitionist, was an active member of the North Country Underground Railroad that helped smuggle former slaves into Canada and freedom through many stops in the North Country. All are encouraged to attend this event that has significant historical value to our North Country area. Thanks to Mike and his DPW staff for keeping projects moving forward despite all the rainy weather. Street paving for this year should wrap up this week. Continued attention to grass mowing and trimming throughout the village, anticipated upgrades at the wastewater facility, and increased activity on sidewalk repair replacement will keep the DPW crew busy for the rest of the summer. All this in addition to their routine daily activities in emergencies. Example this morning, bright and early, had to trim a tree branch that fell down, uh, right across the street from me, and took out the power service out of a house. The village recently underwent a voluntary annual audit that revealed it is in very good financial shape compared with other municipalities, thanks to Juanita and Donna keeping an eye on the budget and spending here in the village. That is my report. Trusty Garrett.
Let's try, I get to go first this month. Uh, I wondered if you were gonna remember that. Moving forward with the playground, we are waiting to, um, get some final information so we can get the diagram finalized as to where we're gonna be placing everything. So we're getting closer. Uh, we are still looking for volunteers, people who are interested in helping us. Uh, once we have everything in place, it would be nice to have part of the festival, to have a ribbon cutting ceremony on the playground, having it done and in place, I would be a nice goal to have. Uh, so really gotta kick things in high gear here in the next month and, um, fit it into Mike's schedule as well. And we do have some people that have come forward that really, that want to help, so we can pull people together. If anyone out there is listening and they're interested in helping, please call the village office, um, two-nine-eight-four-one-five-two and get on our list so that we can let you know the date that we'll move forward with this. So we are taking equipment both from Saint Mary's and Champlain Elementary School, which is really nice. Uh, we've also been approached, um, from Ashley, um, Foisson, uh, its family in, in having some possible parts of the equipment dedicated to, in her memory as a fundraiser that they're planning on doing. I think that would be an absolute wonderful thing to do. Um, if that pleases the board, I think that would be wonderful, uh, as that's how Champlain Elementary came about, it's how Saint Mary's came about.
Janice being contacted for whether.
Great. You know, it's unfortunate that we lose some special people in our community, but there can be a light, a light to that at times to, to keep their memory alive, so, excuse me, I think that'd be a great idea. Um, you read about the Eagle Scout and you've noticed that we've had quite a few Eagle Scouts come through, and that is not a norm. Um, it is extremely rare for a young man to become an Eagle Scout, and this gives kudos to the volunteers within our community. Rick Rivers and his wife, who have been the troop leaders, who took this troop, uh, that was eight boys when they took over and blossomed and have now produced numerous Eagle Scouts. Kudos. Volunteers for the fire department, again, volunteer is such an incredible position and so fulfilling to do. You, you can go so far in your life, and I can't emphasize it enough, to find something that gets your heart pumping and volunteer for it. Um, yes, you're saying with the fire department, it is such a high level of volunteerism that's needed, uh, but so fulfilling and so rewarding. And I just, I really would like to emphasize, you know, with my new job and with volunteers, it's the same thing. It's, it's an elite group of people who will take the time to give back to their community, and that's why we have such a phenomenal community. So think twice about that, you know, joining the fire department or something else, as I said, that gets your blood flowing. If you don't have a lot of time on your hands, then dedicate a day to putting the playground in place. There's so many things, from a day worth of volunteer to weeks to lifetime, and take a look at all the opportunities that are out there, and, and you will feel so fulfilled and enriched in your life. So just, just think about that. Sorry to digress, but as you're hearing all these different volunteer things, it, it really is a wonderful thing to, to do. So we will continue to move forward the playground and continuing to write grants. Um, they're slow in coming, no new ones this month, but we will hopefully hear on more money. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Trusty Chomblin?
Yeah, in regards to the playground, I did bring it up at the, uh, last Columbus Business Meeting, and I can get help there. I just, I just assumed you'd, you set a date, I'll get the word out.
Okay.
I'm gonna recommend from there as well. So I would definitely leave it out.
Well, we should have a date, hopefully, within the next week or two, we can get some target dates out there.
And Mike, Street's open, yeah. Kind of, so only the short. Yeah, I'll leave it on Sunday. That's all I have, man.
Okay, thank you. Trusty Frederick.
Um, first of all, we're organizing the second annual village concert for August fourth, which will feature some local talent from the high school. Um, the time is not set, but I think last year it replaced at six o'clock. So bring along lawn chair and come and join the music. Um, as part of the Village Fest on the seventeenth, we're going to have a five K walk slash run. Um, it will begin at eight A M. down in the River Park. Uh, you can register right then. Um, I'll create a Facebook event page so people can get information there, and I'll need volunteers to help run that and at the finish line, so be on the course and, uh, at the finish line. And as Amy mentioned, um, Ashley Foisson's mother contacted us and I've been, uh, corresponding with her, and we're going to try to organize a run in the early fall as a fundraiser to, um, buy something in her memory for that playground. That's the idea. And that meeting's supposed to take place next week with her, but we haven't set the date yet.
True.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trusty Chomblin?
Um, I just wanted to congratulate Tyler Short on his accomplishment. That is, um, that is a wonderful accomplishment for him, man. Um, and then my other question on paving was, have they gotten their paper back yet?
They just signed it today, blue seal.
Okay.
So he's supposed to call me tomorrow. We might finish, this business is scheduled for Wednesday this week because it's broken down. Depending how things go, I mean, if they run into any trouble, it could be next week, but.
Just in case the people of that one particular street that's not quite finished yet, if they ask.
Yeah, yes.
So maybe we can.
Hopefully, we're hoping this week, if not, it'll probably be Monday and next week.
Okay.
Whether, for me.
Mayday.
I hope you're gonna have a good weekend on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
But he's supposed to call me tomorrow and give me that date. If they can get it done, we have plans on having it, plans on having it Wednesday, but we'd rather pay to take it hard.
Okay. Sorry about that. And then, and I know this is really becoming an issue, and I talked with Mickey about it a little bit before the meeting started, but, um, I don't know how we wanna try to relay this information about, uh, animals in the village, but apparently there's another person with an animal that they should not have in the village, being a rooster. And I'm not sure how we need to get this out to people that this is just not allowed, and he crows all day. Is it possible to somehow get the village law out there so that people who think that it's okay to do this, maybe just because they don't know that they can't?
Well, when the things.
Can we get this in the paper or something?
Well, yeah, and there's gonna be a public forum.
Okay.
As well. Uh, adds up this morning, we received some paperwork, it's under, it's in your packet, paperwork from the village attorney, legal notice, uh, and it goes through and changes definitions and, uh, changes the way that some of this is worded, worded, as well as, uh, one section kennels, kennels and animal hospitals are pretty much going to be deleted. So there's, uh, this is one of the considerations that we have to, we have to vote on approval or disapproval tonight. And then we have a public hearing on the twelfth of August before our next board meeting.
Okay.
And then we can, uh, we have to put these, we have to put these in the paper. So this will be in the.
My other question, because not everyone reads the legals in the paper, would it be possible to get a little article in the paper or something on this? Because it seems to be, it's becoming a much bigger thing lately. And it's coming, it's cropping up everywhere, and I'm, and I'm sure our village is not alone. It's, uh, where we, another place where we are, three doors down, there's Chicken Mountain, so.
Well, uh, Wednesday night's only work, the subject is, uh, has come up. Uh, if we, uh, if we get to passing the local law here, uh, as complaints come in, maybe it would be possible for, when Mike goes to answer those complaints, uh, he can hand them a copy of the law.
And we just need to.
Or an ex-correspondent, simple that.
Yeah, you know, once I know who they are, I can write directly to them.
Do you know who it is?
No, not yet.
It's a rooster in the woods.
I don't think so. All the noise. We can put something on our website, too.
Yep.
Kind of. Thank you.
Okay, can you help? Good work from the clerk treasurer, please.
Hey, everyone, have, uh, June spent the regular report for the new year, for the new year. We also had a water and sewer billing. Water was billed fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents, and sewer was ninety-five thousand, eight sixty-nine, seventy.
Any questions? Any, uh, report? Probably one month into the budget.
We had a, uh, or something, uh, uh, where we used a good chunk of the money, uh, not operational, but, uh, is it under general? I don't know. I think it worked it. Bear with me. Hmm? The clerk just didn't come. Okay. Oh, yeah, contractual, what is that? Treasurer, not clerk, treasurer, contractual. Cause we used, uh, fifteen hundred and thirty radar. What, what comes under that category?
Um.
Okay.
No, that's what it does, man. It's whatever.
Is it?
Your supplies, um, contracts that we have.
That wouldn't go under equipment?
No, supplies. What about our property tax?
Yeah, property tax billing, seven hundred and. Okay.
Yeah. We have our telephone bill from Friday here.
I was looking at the eight, thirteen, twenty-five point four. Just curious, that makes sense, the building, the taxes, makes sense. That would be a chunk of that. Just make sure.
Yeah, this is our second month. It's May, or June and July, so.
Right, but we only budgeted for thirty-six fifty.
Yeah.
That's all, and we've spent fifteen thirty already, so I'm curious as to what comes out.
Taxes, our payroll taxes, seven hundred and fifty.
Okay. What else comes out of contractual? You said supplies, stuff, do?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Normally, there's, most of the supplies that we're buying out, it's not, it's not
So it's eight hundred roughly of spending on a contractual, then?
You'd have to look it up. It's probably last month. It's not on this one.
Curious. I think it was. There's one question I have.
Any other discussion? Presentation, one.
Um, we have additional invoices to add, in the amount of two thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and two cents.
Motion to approve the word.
Sub move.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the word?
What's the green or the orange?
That's between those, kids, those, uh, I wipe.
Well, that's where?
Water, sewer, cleaning, all places.
Those have cans and power systems, uh, we have two, uh, mixing significant repairs on the generators. Uh, what did they repair here, Mike?
I only changed the water pump.
What, waste water?
At the, at the water plant, not, I didn't hit that pump with, like, five hundred and something, probably just a pump.
Well, it's got fourteen sixty-one.
Well, there was other stuff there, but I didn't pump itself.
They replaced the increase, the hardware, the water pump, and gas tank. The water pump was a thousand dollars.
We luckily don't want it removed. It was here, swapped out this year. And they also put a block here, I think, on the water.
And the one here. You know, it's one here, block here, hose and.
And they say they care on electric, they repaired that motor that we-
I brought in the two, but one of them we caught on and tested, and we ended up getting it back in, and the other one is going out of the back end. And when he rebuilds them all, he merges it. Then we made a little-
Was that for the lift station?
Yeah, the lift station.
What are the new ones priced at, Mike? Just to make comparison. Eight thousand, eighty-five hundred? That number sounds familiar to me.
He still has other downer pumps, too, if you repair them, it will be extended. The ones that did have to change the fields, everything, we're talking about, we don't, don't be smashing this whole. He doesn't like to do a flat rate, because it could be, we want to replace the whole one, and we have to.
As has been proven this last month or so, it's good to have one on here. Any other questions on the work? Phil Colf, please.
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich?
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Good work from the superintendent, please.
Well, we did a lot of grass mowing. Trimming, brush cutting, just general upkeep. Our records room back here, the door, we repaired that, the door wasn't secure, it shouldn't have been, that's been fixed. And we were just talking about the lift stations, we had, we had a pump, a tripping lift station with a high pole, and we ended up babysitting it all night. One pump couldn't keep up, that's when we went down, we were able to put another pump in, now we put the third pump in. Everything was fine, we pulled them, cleaned them, ended up being just stuck, caught up in the pump, it was a bigger trip. When there's high poles, one pump pulled up, we put those two pumps. But we're back up to, back up to three pumps in there, and no issues ever since, but we've flown there all while, we've run it for a while. We keep resetting it. Meter readings are done, of course, the water buildings are done. We did receive our belts, a new set of belts for our press. I haven't put them on yet, but we did receive them, and the set that we have, I had sent away, they have the clippers installed. So, a spare set. And as soon as we get a chance, we'll replace them, because the ones on there are stretched, they're stretched pretty good. We've been doing a lot of ditch cleaning, cutting shoulders on roads, getting culverts to try to, with all the rain we had, try to keep flooding, flooding to the minimal, and it's been, we're in good shape compared to some of the other towns and counties. The only thing I'd like to ask the residents, to trim, I had one instance where somebody trimmed all their seaters, left them in the ditch, and plugged the culverts up. Please don't put your brush and this kind of stuff in the culverts, that just creates problems, and having to clean it out. I mean, if you're really in a bind, and can't, can't bring it up to the, up to Elm Street to get rid of it, and let us know here. I'd rather have you call us and talk to us, instead of putting it into the, into the ditches where it gets stuck in the culverts and having water backed up, and we don't want property damage or anything like this, so I'd appreciate it. If you have any questions, just call here. And also, taking care of our roads, Finley, Dry, we put culverts in, we widened roads about eight feet. Compared to what it was, we have the, we have the binder coat down, the county came up and put a tire down for us. But hopefully, this week, toward the end of the week, hopefully, we'll have the top coat on, and that'll be paved, filling off Finley, as well as Chestnut. We lost this point, I talked to Ryan Pelkey, and he sent a couple guys up with a grinder, he did all the grinding for us. I want to thank Ryan, Ryan in the village lost this point for that, he was very helpful. This way here, the county didn't have to do it, and put a further behind than what they are now. This coming week, actually Thursday, I'm supposed to put the new water meter, in our water plant from distribution, the new meter we had bought. One of the fellows from Census is supposed to come up. We do all the wiring and watch us with the installation. That might change, just depending when the county, I've got to kind of go by the county's schedule for paving, so that could change. They might have to postpone it for next week. But we will notify, I want to notify all, all the day users, you know, part of our, none of these guys, that make sure they don't drop. But once we fill the tank, we shut it down, we change it out, we lean down, we pump the tank, so. Now, hopefully, we'll have that done Thursday. And we also received our new radios, which worked well. Actually, I use it this morning here to call in the car, and we did get our upgraded radios, and we have been using them. And a new employee also started today. I guess that's about all I have. If there's any questions for me? For me? I did put, I know we're looking for a used dump truck, single axle. There's, for used trucks, they all seem to range in the thirty thousand, thirty to forty thousand dollar range. We've got a couple options, we found one with a plow on it. Two thousand and three, one place had, another place, we had so many to choose from, most of them are all cabin chassis, we can use our box on. It just depends on how new we want, you know, if we can decide how new we want, we can give us a more narrow down price. But they all seem to be between thirty and forty thousand dollars for a used dump truck.
Using the old bikes will decrease the price?
Yes.
Can I ask the deputy, consider mileage before, is he, is he?
There is one right now, but one of the companies did get back to me today, they have an old three with forty-five thousand miles. That does have a plow on it. But it's going to be, you know, we need an extra plow or not. It's a straight blade plow, versus ours, and that here is an angle plow. It's another plow, and there is a better plow, but it's going to be the choice of who we really need to back up plow.
What are they asking for that one?
Thirty-five. I was, I just looked at thirty-eight, but people, we thought doing a three, not set this far.
You should, that is the age, and so on, three years ago, it would be.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
That was a truck from Road, South Road.
In regards to the plow, I think we, we player it.
That would be it.
Kind of a little player to the back. I guess if you found the rates up to great money and a half dollars, well, it's still.
Right. Because what we're going to do, we're going to take the law, we're going to sit there and, if something happened, we got in the bind, I'm sure I could, you know, talk to somebody, and can get back up, you know, get, get us by a short time, if we had one that broke down or something like this. I think we're better off to buy a cabin chassis, we can use a box, a box, and then we align that box on the older truck. And it saves us, you know, about six thousand dollars, if I could go that way, but probably even more than that.
Probably, I agree with you. I want to reiterate your thank you, residents, thank for the help, and also, also a ton of champagne as well.
That's very nice, providing a lot of gravel, plus used truck, number of days.
That's awesome.
Given that truck is kind of aged, it was good to have. Okay, anything else, Roy? Correspondents, please.
Correspondence from Salt Saint Marie, Ontario regarding land border crossing fees. Article seventy-eight received from Steven Meyer against Village Champlain, the Zoida border appeals. Correspondence from Karen Briette, Pope's Officer Petro regarding noise issue with neighbors. Correspondence from the Clinton County Health Department regarding a two thousand thirteen water system sanitary survey report. Correspondence from the Clinton County Health Department regarding low water pressure issues along Prospect Street. Correspondence from the city of Augsburg regarding resolution in support of the St. Lawrence psychiatric center that serves six counties. Correspondence from Mycom regarding uniform notice of play mat. Letter to Judy Kelly regarding water meter, meters at her residence at twelve fifty Rowan Line. Correspondence from O'Connell Armowitz regarding King Street property. JCO monthly report. Correspondence from Louise LePlante, Alvest Development regarding property at twenty-three Spruce Street. List of unsuccessful candidates for the public works maintenance person position that will send letters. Resolution of congratulations to Eagle Scout Tyler Short. Thank the letters to Town Champlain Highway Superintendent Allen Reesing for gravel and use of their truck.
Any comments, questions on the correspondence? In regards to number five, the low pressure issue on Prospect Street, I was in contact with Judy Ross, the health department today. This is an ongoing issue, has been going on for years and years and years and years, every time the inspection is made. We have, and if you look at the timeline of that document, July fifteenth is the, is the deadline, at least, from the health department to have an engineer do the study. We've already done that study, that study's been done. I talked to her about that today. We will email, pass along that information, plus the engineer that we have dealing with the water project, Matt Cooper from Birmingham Car, has also been in contact with Ms. Ross, and dealing with this issue. Once the grants start coming, and it'll start next, next month or in September, we should have a better idea. To me, to solve that problem, you need to put a booster pump up on the top of Prospect for the first twelve or fourteen residents. But if the project goes through, and we are funded with this project, that means a water tower will be erected at the top of Prospect Hill, so it kind of makes the whole pressure pump kind of redundant at that pump. So, the health department has kind of given us some leeway here to find out what's going on, what's going on with the grant process, and what's going on with this water project. I mean, it's been ongoing, I know it's been a problem for years. But it's something that we're going to have to address directly here in the near future. The pressure pumps, better in spoke, don't make it, can't use it.
But is this present, like, considered?
Mike, comments with him, or my conversations with this party, and the asked, you know, they're. Okay, any others? Full business? The only article, the only part I have ever full business is the first hour policy.
No, I completely forgot about it. That'll be on my agenda this weekend.
Any other new business, or old business? Okay, new business? We've got a number of things we need to address here. Award for roof repair bids, you can copy for that, you see a wide disparity in prices? With a lot of these, it's how many, how many employees they have, and how much to pay. All of these companies are going to get their supplies from the same, from the same, from the same store, I guess, partners, or whatever, one yard.
But in regards to the garage, we were probably looking at the same, like, the metal and all, and all bills? Or is Lake Champlain still standing the same?
Difference is listed here.
Yeah, they don't list any difference, in what they're going to use, what you gave us anyway.
I was going to say, they have to have their numbers backwards.
Obviously, yeah.
I drilled it earlier, it's nasty.
Yeah. But between the two that, you know, are very close in price, my question I had, too, is what are the supplies that they will be using? You know, you can't really compare just a bid, when we don't know the grade of material that they'll be using. You know what I mean? Is it, you know, what kind of shingles, what kind of metal, all of that makes a difference. So, with such a huge difference in pricing, that would be my next question before we accept one of these two low bids, is what is the particulars in the material being used?
Yeah.
Just not just doing this, but up shoddy stuff?
No, two of them are so close, and the one contract that I thought all he did was stand the scene, that would be a little bit crazy. That's a much better material.
Mike, on the last quote, they didn't, they wouldn't quote on the big one?
They just wanted to do, just shingles, they don't know what to do with it.
I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'd rather have one contractor in here.
I agree.
Than having.
Yes, they did, they were the only ones that did, so that's the concern, it says for a lifetime shingle from Lake Champlain. But what is the metal that we're using on the other part, what is the shingles that everyone else is using?
Well, we didn't ask.
We didn't ask, we did age it, metal gauge, and we just used a little bit of your shingle.
So, really, how do we compare when we don't know what kind of materials they're going to be using or accept them, when we don't know what kind of materials they're going to be using?
What, can we just, can we just contact the two bids that we're interested in?
Yeah.
And ask for materials? Are they doing drugs?
That would be good.
Put on Lake Champlain.
Want to wait until the next meeting, and then get a decision here, or can we find out?
Is that waiting too long?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, you're pushing now to August, then- If we get the specs, can we just have a quick five minute meeting? To make that decision?
Yeah.
I think we should, there, because it's going to push their schedule even further.
All right, with all the rain we've been having.
All right, so we'll make calls tomorrow?
Yeah.
Find out what kind of shingles and what kind of metal they're using?
Yeah.
The type, the longevity, the age, whatever, I don't know what you're going to ask, so.
Are you just going to ask for specs from the two, the two lower, most bids?
And then we can-
Any of these bids, is there caveat or additional repairs necessary? I didn't notice that.
It was each of them, it has been on theirs. Yeah, what was it?
Yes, you're right. Actually, if you want to read them, they're cut.
Yeah, he adjusted it.
He had written it out. It would be the same one, and it was a machine. So, actually, please, I think I have to call your shingle down back first.
Yeah, you might have, it's on paper.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure over three years.
The board, they have a press meeting to approve? Next Monday, I won't be here. It's Tuesday, I'll be here.
The sixteenth?
I'm going to go the sixteenth.
So, five o'clock, then?
Five, no, five thirty? No. No.
Yeah, 5:00. 5:00, I can get back up by 5:00. 5:15, 5:00.
Okay, by 15th, August 16th. July 16th, thank you.
We know what you meant.
Michael Teller made a mistake when I drew on their breath. Okay, so special meeting, July 16th, 5:15. Consider the roof bids, we'll have that information tomorrow. Surveying quotes, involved in copy with that information?
No, it always means, this means nothing to me.
Well...
Glad to hear that.
It's like, okay, it's a nice number.
We requested, requested votes, or quotes, excuse me, from three surveying firms. River Street, the River Bank, by Moore Street, the Frog Pond, and one other Mill Street. We haven't got the information that I think is required from Mill Street. So I recommend that we look only at the three here. River Street, the flood buyout lots, the River Bank on Route 9, and Frog Pond, to see especially the last two, so that we can advertise those for sale.
Okay, so these are three firms and this is a dollar amount figure that you put into these things?
Yes, so there's three locations here.
Mr. Kitcher, dollar signs would have been nice.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Across the top is Flashbang Surveying, AES, and then the last one is Southern. And we have used those, we've used them in the past to do some surveying.
The last one, the RMS?
Yes, yes. And I have the rest of the information here.
So I make a motion to use RMS to provide surveys for the River Street, the River Bank, and Frog Pond in a total of $5,122. Second.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
What fund would it come out of? Engineer?
Great, thanks for getting the quote.
Mr. Laraswe's quotes were, the first one was 22 to 2,600. So I took the middle figure here. As it was for the next two as well. 45 to 29 and 43 to 27. I don't know why, maybe it's one of the different quotes. Do we have a line? Where the money will come from, do we have a line? And we have a motion and a second to go with RMS, 8151, 122. Any other discussion on this?
Trustee Tromley?
Aye.
Trustee from Fethrich?
Aye.
Trustee Tromley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett? But that will put us over, we only 3,500 in that account. Move pens. Aye. Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Okay, mowing quotes. I called S for three. I called a few firms and I have quotes. A fourth person came in, they're calling me and said they gave her that you were looking for someone to mow some grass. He offered to provide a quote. You see the properties listed here. 660 Prospect Street, 188 South Street, 42 Willow Street, 13 Oak Street, 139 Elm Street, 17 Fenner Drive, and 36 Pine Street. Would the tree look off today? I received two quotes, two quotes in return. One for the sum of $2,575 and the second for the sum of $275.
Now, the first one obviously is $2,575. Is that mowing for the rest of the season, on a weekly basis? That was a one time?
It's a one time, well?
This quote is for mowing, raking on newly grass for the above properties.
For one time?
One time.
Can I make a motion that we accept bid of Ken Clausen in a total of $275?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Now, I made sure when Mr. Clausen brought in this bid this afternoon, I emphasized the point that the properties were to be mowed, were to be raked, and to remove the grass from the property. In fact, I asked him that twice, and I said, this is what's going to happen. He said, you want his mowed every week, every second week, every third week? I said, no, we want to mow it once. If we decide that we want to mow it again, we will call. We'll use the same person, I assume. I said, if we decide that we want to do it again, he will call you and set up a time for you to do this. You notice that there's a huge disparity in prices?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, when I looked at this, I asked him, are you sure? He said, yes, I am sure. I said, okay.
Well, I would suggest that we just have him sign this.
All right, I'll call him tomorrow and we will, I'll set up a time with him and go through it again with him and have him sign it and then let him loose.
If he agrees to that, I have a house that I hired that guy.
Okay?
Well, maybe I'm wrong, but I would think that he's looking to make this as a regular, which at this rate, I would rather it be kept up every two weeks, rather than get it to this ridiculous absurd stage.
So that may be something of a... Let's get it moved.
Let's see how it goes.
Yes.
We can discuss this again on the 16th. All right?
Yes. Are you going to, before we move on, you're going to ask him to mow as soon as possible?
Okay, you've been copied number seven in your correspondence. This is a, this is something we received from New York State Uniform Notice of Claim Act. Instead of coming, my understanding is reading this, instead of going to the villages and municipalities first, now the claims must go to the Secretary of State first. Where are you reading it from?
No, if they can serve the claim on the state, I think it's either or. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I believe.
I thought it was just a money grabbing thing where you had to pay so much to the state and they give you bad gas.
I'm sure it is, but a person would be killed on it.
Well, be that as it may, we need a motion or resolution approving the designation, an appointment of an individual to whom the Secretary of State must mail notices of claim. We have city and village officials have until July 15, 2013, to file the certificate with the Secretary of State. I would like a motion appointing Juanita Minos as the contact person for these notices of claim.
Thank you so much.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this? Juanita's graciously volunteered.
Thank you, Juanita. It's very, other do set a sign.
Is anything okay?
So, so sorry.
No, that's fine. We just had a resolution, Amy, for the Uniform Notice of Claim Act.
Yep.
Number seven, we get correspondence. We need to adopt a resolution or motion designating or appointing the individual that the Secretary of State must mail notices of claim. Juanita has graciously volunteered. The motion's been made and seconded.
I think I forced it on you.
We were just talking about volunteerism.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you for giving us a fine line there.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion on this? Juanita, you have a favor?
Good answer.
All those, all those in favor of adopting this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, motion carries? These have penciled in. E is legal notice, local law number one. Received today from the village attorney. Amendment supplement for usage definitions, chapter 119 zoning of the code Village Champlain. By the amendment, there are two of 119-16 definitions in Article 3, by the amendment of necessary use for structure, and by the addition of the term animals to 119-16 definitions into amendment supplement, 119-42.6, kennels and animal hospitals of Article 7 of said zoning. Notice that it is very, we've read down here about two thirds of the way with the sentence that begins. This said, local law also adds the term animals to 119-16 definition, animals, fowls, birds, hogs, cows, horses, goats, sheep, llamas, racunas, alpacas, all other farm animals, reptiles, amphibians, snakes, and any wild animals of any nature shall not be permitted in the village limits. Goes on, chapter 119, kennels and animal hospitals. Keeping of animals, all as defined here and above in 119-16 definitions, shall not be permitted in the village limits. This said, local law also amends and supplements 119 attachment, one of zoning to prevent kennels and animal hospitals in all zones. The above is a summary of the local law being considered as a force that full tax is available for inspection at the village office during normal business hours. Need a motion to approve this? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this?
What are we going to do with existing animals?
Those that came into existence before zoning, let's see the other.
Before zoning, and do we have a date of that?
I believe it was in 1987.
Should that be stated in here?
It's stated in the other...
It's stated in the zoning code under pre-existing non-conforming uses.
Does that cover us? Does that cover us?
Yeah, basically what it states is that if it was in existence at the time zoning was adopted, it's allowed to continue, but it can't increase.
Unless there's a year's absence.
Well, if there's a year's absence, then the use has to revert back to a conformal use, meaning that you should not be able to bring it back. You have to go before the zoning board or the use makers to be stated or reapply.
Any other discussion on this? This will have to be in the newspaper. Okay, notice is hereby given that the Board of Trustees, Village of Champlain, County Council, State of New York, will on the 12th day of August 2013, hold a public hearing at the municipal offices on Main Street in the Village of Champlain at 7:00 p.m., thereafter regarding the adoption and passage of the following local law. Local law number one for the year 2013 for the Village of Champlain.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
Okay, so if we have the pre-existing law to say 86 or whatever that year may be, and say for example, the landowner had a couple of horses. But later on, after the fact of the new zoning, then expanded the area and increased it and made it even bigger, how would they fall in compliance with others that have added in at a later date? I think we have an issue that's going to come up here that I'm trying to...
I don't think there's any limit on the number of animals.
Yes, there is. When zoning came into effect, whatever you had at that time is what his grandfather did. If you expanded after that time, technically you'd be in violation. The problem is, in 1986, when zoning came into effect, I don't believe anyone ever went around and documented what was here or there on these particular places. So one part or the other has to show proof that, yes, I did have this, financial evidence or bill of sale or whatever. And the zoning board or the village have to prove, know you did, so it becomes a problem unless there are good records kept or documents made at that time. Typically, I have not seen that anywhere.
Is that helping?
Nope, that does not help me at all. Don't think it's going to help us at all either.
Well, we can send it back, Mr. Marshall, what do you suggest?
Well, the problem is, is the ambiguity in the record keeping, as you're saying. We are going to create an issue here based on some grandfathered in that really did not have the capacity at the grandfather of 86, but with no proof or documentation. But that creates an issue.
So are you saying that somebody who wants to expand now, is that what you mean?
No, I'm saying, no, for someone who has expanded over the years and is much larger at this point, as opposed to someone who came on five, six years ago and created farm animals in the village, how do we accept or...
But you wouldn't, five, six years ago, you would not have farm animals in the village because they would not have been grandfathered in, so it shouldn't have been allowed.
But it was and it is, and so we have an issue.
But you would have missed it without specificity to the existing law. Wouldn't change anything, would it clarify?
Right, but what I'm saying is if we are going to come down on someone with chickens, or chickens, and there's legal action pending and all of that, then what's going to happen is we're going to be going around the village, people are going to be going around the village and say, well, what about so-and-so? And what about so-and-so? And if we don't have our facts and ducks in a line, we're setting ourselves up for abduction here.
But anybody who, since zoning came in, would have had to come before the zoning board, which they were grandfathered in, so they shouldn't have been allowed to have it. If they were allowed to have it, then there was a problem with the zoning system. And you have now gone five, six years, I find it hard to believe that we've since let farm animals be in the village when we had the zoning in effect.
They would have to prove that they were here prior to zoning, otherwise they're violating...
And it's going to be very hard for somebody that suddenly is having horses on their property to say, oh, I've had these animals here for 20 something years. I don't think we're going to have a problem, and if we do, I guess we're just going to have to deal with it. You have very... I could think of one instance where you've got someone grandfathered in. So it's grandfathered, so that's why, that's why I'm not understanding. So nothing would change for him, you're saying, his grandfathered in? Except that if he wished to expand, then you'd have to go before you. So we already have the wasn't place for that. So I'm not, I guess I'm just not seeing where you're trying to go with it.
Well, expansion has happened way past 86. And other farm animals are now in village limits that weren't in prior to that. And I'm just saying, based on how things are going with, you know, hiring lawyers to come after us, we're setting ourselves up for an issue, and I'm very concerned with it. Because we've not been... it because we've not been stringent and strict in enforcing all of these said laws.
We're gonna.
I'm just concerned.
So I know, so what are you proposing that we do?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know. I, I think that we need with all of this zoning issue is that if it's A, it's gonna be A, and it's gonna be A every day of the week of every year, whether you're John Paul Pulp number fifty-two or you're Amy Garrett on seven Chestnut Street. It doesn't matter who you are, where you came from, or what the situation is. This is a law, this is a zoning, and we have to start enforcing right across the board. Same thing with garbage and junk in people's yard. We close our eyes to some people and other people were coming down on them, and we have to be consistent right across the board, clear cut, no questions. This zoning is black and white. There shouldn't be any gray, and we got a lot of gray going on.
The zoning is very gray.
But it shouldn't be. If you have a law with regulations, and, and that's what I'm saying, I don't wanna create another gray and have to hire our attorney again to give us another legal notice that we have to pay more money for when it isn't, isn't as specific as it could be, or are we going to be able to enforce with this? Are you going to be able to take care of issues in this village with this new verbiage? Or are we going to have more letters coming to us monthly with a lawsuit?
Basically, whatever the zoning code is, is what I have to enforce. All we're doing with this new law is clarifying the definition of domesticated animals or an accessory use where domesticated animals was considered a part of that use. Now we've eliminated it from that, so there should not be an issue. As far as the grandfathering issue and what was here before and what's grandfathered in what isn't, that's a whole totally separate issue. Has nothing to do with what you're trying to pass here tonight.
Okay. That answers my question. But what are we going to do about that issue? That's another question. Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's fine. We're here for it. Okay? Any motion? Do we have a second? The rule call, please.
Trustee Tromley.
Aye.
Trustee from Petrich.
Aye.
Trustee Tromley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Okay, uh, this afternoon, we were given a, an adjustment request on the water sewer bill, the last water sewer bill. I said that we'd bring it to the board. We have addressed these issues in the past, this recently, it was last October, if you recall. We see the case is stated here. Done it with some figuring, and the average, the average credit for the credit would actually be nine hundred and ninety dollars, is that it? Okay, I don't know where, where the resident came up with the nine fifty, but done it with some looking at past usages over the last four years. Please, the board's pleasure.
We said, yeah, with it in the past.
Yes.
On what, during the past.
Last October, we had a case with a, with a hose ran for a couple of days. I forget what the amount of usage was, a hundred dollar amount that was requested, but the board.
Oh, I believe it was about a hundred and twenty dollars.
We've been trying to get away from this for a lot of this.
We're very, very consistent. I think we are stuck to making the same decision.
Any motion to either approve or disapprove this request?
I'd like to table it another month, and I, I'd like to get information, a history of, is it extremely difficult for you guys to pull our history of crediting people and what the reasons were for? Is that massive amount of requests on my part here?
No. We're lost. I mean, you, you've kind of backed away from this.
We are. We have said that we are backing away, but I know that we've made other, you know, I'd like to see what our consistency has been, 'cause as I just said a moment ago, I'd like to be and remain consistent in our decisions.
Well, your consistency, the last one you did in October was the same situation. I mean, we're not yet.
Right. That was the first time.
I think it was a couple of years ago.
In prior to that, we had one where the water sufferer put it into a back flush for days and days on a property on Prospect Street and denied that one.
But, but the problem here, I guess, is I don't know about the software, how the water works, but, but the other one and this one, the water did not go into the sewer system, so.
Not well adapted.
But still.
Right, and that's the thing. What I wanna see is, in the circumstance, have we ever denied when it was unequivocal that the water did not go into the sewer system? Did we ever deny that?
I think we did in a couple of cases years ago.
I think the one last fall we did, yes.
It was a couple of years ago. We all sat here at this table and said, "We were done, uh, doing this."
No, I know that. I remember that, but.
We have rejected all of them since.
That's my question. I, I need confirmation on that.
I think, I think that when we first made that decision and made that motion, I think we did sway, unsurprised, and then we, then we.
It was like this.
Yeah, exactly. And then we.
Oh, what's the case?
I know what, last, last October was.
The hose, was it the hose outside the trailer?
This, this one here?
The one in October that we denied?
Outside the resident's house.
Yes.
It was where the person was washing. Well, we can table this and then get the information actually. We can look at it.
I feel more comfortable.
Okay. Do we need a motion to table this?
You can, I mean, it's.
Okay.
There's one of those.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I did. I'd like to make a motion to table this to either next Tuesday or, I don't know how fast you'd get that affirmation, 'cause he has to pay late the, um.
Well, we will, we will just absolve him of the late, because it's any questions.
Okay, great. So I'd like to table this to next month's meeting.
August. Is it August? Oh. August board meeting. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, if you find the same guy?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion.
Yes, it's.
Okay, I have one other, one other issue under new business. Correspondence number six, City of Augensburgh. Please join me in supporting St. Lawrence Psychiatric Center, serves six counties being designated, regional center of excellence, as proposed by claim forwarded by Commissioner Christine Goodlaw, Office of General Health, in the future. Skipping down to the last paragraph, I urge you and your council board to introduce and pass a resolution at your next scheduled board meeting to show your, your community's support for S L P C, St. Lawrence Psychiatric Center. I have enclosed a prepared resolution for your consideration. Feel free to use this resolution as it is or as you require. I request you to certify copy of the resolution you sent from the ad. On the opposite side, support for the continued operation of the St. Lawrence Psychiatric Center. And this is the resolution, whereas, and I'm not going to read it all.
In just, the concern is the number of beds being diminished greatly for psychiatric care, which would mean for people in our residence being shipped to Albany or further south, east into the city mainly is where everyone goes if there are no beds available. And it is a critical situation to support what we do have to be able to maintain it. We are a huge mileage area, and for those families that do have children and adults with psychiatric care, it is important to keep them close to their family for the most positive and productive, um, return to society.
So you make a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Notice down at the bottom, third, second paragraph from the bottom, if you prefer the reserved, resolve that the Village of Champlain purchases the New York State Office of General Health to visit me in St. Lawrence as a senior vice manager. Essentially what we're doing is we're opposing an plan that would involve closure or reduction in services of the St. Lawrence Psychiatric Center. Any further discussion on this, Mary? Good motion, we have a second. All those in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Any other in business? We have one table to look at. First off, policy next month, special meeting on the sixteenth to look at the roof repair bids. Call the engineers tomorrow, start the surveying issue. Lawn mowing will be, I'll inform this person, and then we'll move forward. Any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?